I lost it. I just couldn't take it. I call the meeting of the Falmouth Public Schools to order for October 12th, 2021. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting, but it can be viewed live on Channel 14 and recording of this meeting can be viewed on YouTube. Let's begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording of this meeting, please notify me by raising the hand icon on your screen and I will notify the public for the Massachusetts Public Meeting laws. Do we have anyone who is making a recording today? Check. And seeing no hands raised, we'll move on. Terry, mission and vision, please.
Okay, the Falmouth Public Schools' mission, the Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and reciliency. The Falmouth Public Schools' vision, creators of Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you, Terry. And this evening, we will be sharing our land acknowledgements and Andrea will read it tonight.
Pleasure. The Falmouth School Committee acknowledges that we are gathering on the unceded ancestral land of the Wampanoag Nation. We recognize and respect the Wampanoag people, including those of Sakaneset, Lakoid, Syphilisit, Taticet, and Chapakoid as original stewards of what is now known as the Town of Falmouth and honor their enduring relationship with this land. This land acknowledgement is an intentional act to counter the erasure of indigenous people and to demonstrate respect for their sovereign rights. We are committed to educating ourselves and our students about the longstanding history of the Wampanoag people. In alignment with the core values of the Falmouth Public Schools, we pledge to build an ongoing partnership with the Wampanoag Nation.
Great, thank you, Andrea. Public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length. Due to the open meeting law, there will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the committee's discussion of an item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@falmouth.k12.m a.us. Do we have any public comment this evening? Moving on. The first item on our agenda is the student advisory report and we are thrilled to have some high school students joining us this evening. Proceed, Teagan.
Teagan. Teagan. Hi, sorry if there's any background noise. I'm at a soccer game, but I currently can't play because my spring tingle. But, um, like she said, hi, my name is Teagan Lind and I'm a sophomore at Falmouth High School. Thank you all for having me. So some exciting events that have happened recently include the homecoming dance and homecoming game. We had both of them on October 1st a couple of weeks ago and it was a success. Not only did the football team beat New Bedford, over 500 tickets were sold and many students went and participated at the dance and had a blast. Sports have been going very well. The field hockey team, soccer teams, golf, and cross-country are able to compete against other schools while keeping a good record. Coaches and athletic administrators have many students involved with various sports, encouraging them to keep up their physical being, which is beneficial for our social and mental health. Rehearsals for the plays, 12 angry jurors have started after school and all the roles have been casted. The marching band is also in full swing and working hard playing at the football games. This past week, we also had our knee ass visit, which was also successful. I was lucky enough to participate in the meeting with some of their representatives and we discussed the school culture, Clipper time, motto, grading, and class life. And I believe that they would conclude that we were an excellent school and all students upheld the Clipper standard and pride. Additionally, this school year has been exponentially better for us Clippers. We are able to communicate with our teachers, interact with fellow classmates, and get a better learning experience and environment altogether. If you ask any of our Falmouth High School students, you will hear the same response. That school this year is off to a great start.
Great, thank you, Teagan. And would you like to add to that?
Well, no, I mean, you did a great job, Teagan.
Awesome.
I'd also like to say that Teagan is a part of the superintendent's advisory council. So thank you for that, Teagan, and thank you for agreeing to be our liaison to the school committee.
No problem.
Can I say something?
Yeah, she says, I'm especially glad you're here because I'm one person who asks eternally for students to be there. And there's a market near the high school and employs a lot of high school students. And since I live near there, I go in there a lot. And I don't, I tell them that I'm not wearing them on the school committee and ask them questions because we haven't had a student advisory person for so long. So I'm really glad you're here. And just to tell you, like, it's good to hear how students really feel like the dance. I was worried because it was so cold and I said, oh, those poor kids, they're gonna freeze out there. But I heard it. I heard everybody having a good time and you mentioned it. So anyway, I'm glad you're on board.
Yeah, we all love to, and the score of the game right now is 1-0, Nauset's winning.
Do we have any questions or comments for Teagan while we still have her? Andrea?
I just have a comment because I know that we so value the student input and we appreciate you being here tonight. And it's been a real challenge over the years. And in fact, there have been times when we've realized that many of the students who want to extend themselves to be in this role are also those that are incredibly busy. And this is a tough time of the evening to be able to have someone come in. And I think this is something that Zoom is offering us, a way for you to be in two places at one time. We appreciate that.
Absolutely agree. And thanks to your coach for letting you do both.
Yeah, the only role I would have is basically cheering on the team. But so.
Did you want to add about?
So, yeah, we do have an alternate when Teagan cannot be with us. We actually have a second person that has said that they would step in and meet with us today. And so Petroshe.
I. Teagan. Petroshe's last name.
Oh, Petroshe Johnson.
Johnson, right. Sorry about that. It just escaped me. So we may have two students that we'll be seeing this year. So excited about that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Teagan.
Thank you again.
Bye.
Bye bye.
Good night. Okay, and we love hearing about students. And I'll turn that second item over to you about the award certificate of academic excellence.
Yeah, thank you. So the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents has a certificate of academic excellence that we award each year. The criteria is the three-year cumulative average, rank in class, personnel, personal selection. The superintendent has leeway among the top 5% of his or her personal selections. So I'm very happy to announce that tonight we have Andrew Mark Welsh. Have we promoted Andrew? And I believe the parents are there as well.
I see two, but I'm worried if I do, both will be back into each other at some point.
Okay, all right, great. Hello, Andrew. It's so very exciting to be able to introduce you to the school committee and award you tonight with the certificate of academic excellence. And a little bit about Andrew. He has a 4.0 GPA. He, in addition to that, he has attended and has successfully completed three courses with Harvard Extension School, Calculus, Linear Algebra, and Linear Algebra and Real Analysis One. So he's got an A in the first two classes. And my understanding is you're taking that third class right now in the fall. He's a member of the National Honor Society, Science Honor Society, Math Honor Society, French Honor Society, and the Triumph Music Honor Society. He volunteers hours as a tutor. And my understanding is that you play saxophone, Andrew, and you have participated in many of the music festivals and competitions locally in Massachusetts, across Massachusetts, is that correct? We are very honored to introduce you and award you with this certificate. Would you like to say anything?
We can see you, but we can't hear you at this point.
Brian, can you help us? So just to let you know. So let me tell you a little bit more about Andrew. I was gonna ask you, Andrew, where you've applied to college? My understanding is you've applied to MIT and Harvard? Yes. Maybe you've applied somewhere else, I'm not sure. But, um, so I think that you're very excited about having this award tonight and I will be visiting you to give you your certificate.
Sounds great. Thank you so much for being here. Congratulations, Andrew. Congrats. Amazing. Take care. That was unreal. All of his accomplishments are absolutely fascinating. Next act on MASC delegate. So background information, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees is holding their annual conference on November 3rd through 6th. And every year, we nominate a member of the school committee to go and represent us as the Assembly of Delegates. Last year, it was Andrea. And I, we need a, the primary person often alternate in case that person can't be here. So Andrea, I don't want to speak for you, but you've expressed interest in doing this again. So I would like to nominate Andrea Thurl to represent us for the MASC delegate. Kelly, is that a second?
That's a second.
Okay. It's an eager second. I love it. Leah is via Zoom tonight, so we're going to do a roll call vote. So all in favor of Andrea Thurl being a representative to the MASC Assembly of Delegates? Starting with, actually, let's start with Leah. Leah, if you could unmute, we'll start with you since you're via Zoom.
I, yes, thank you very much, Andrea.
Yes. Bill Ryder.
Yes.
Bill Dean.
Bill Dorff, yes.
Lisa. Lisa Hart, yes.
Melissa.
Melissa.
Keith, yes.
Well, yes.
Terry.
Madures, yes.
Andrea Thurl, yes.
And Natalie, I'm also a yes to unanimous. Thank you so much, Andrea, for representing us. And we also should, per the form, we need to have an alternate as well. Is there anyone else who would like to serve as the alternate or the school committee? Should something occur with, for Andrea? Terry. So nominate Terry. Is there a second? Bill Dorff in our seconds. So once again, we'll start with Leah to nominate Terry Madures as our alternate to the delegate. There we go.
Yes, yes, thank you, Terry.
Bill Ryder?
Yes.
Bill Dorff.
Dorff, yes.
Lisa, Lisa Hart, yes.
Melissa.
Melissa.
Keith, yes.
Well, yes.
Terry Madures, yes.
Andrea Thurl, yes.
Natalie, and I'm also a yes, so that is unanimous. Thank you both, yes.
I just wanted to, you know, point people to the mass website that has the report from the resolutions committee. You can look at, see the things that we will be voting on there. And I think that if there's anything that anybody has questions on that we could probably, the meeting is its first few days in November.
Right.
So we would have time for the, at our next meeting, if there was anything we need to discuss in public session.
Correct, yes. And thank you for that, Andrea. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, with the Assembly of Delegates meets that Saturday. Yes, that's right. Great, thank you very much. So I will move up the form and send that off. Next is the presentation on enrollment and class size. Lori.
Yes, thank you. All right, so tonight has the student enrollment presentation. All data is taken from the October 1st data collection. And that's been standard now for a few years. So we have 3,090 students enrolled. And we have, this is by each school, so you can see the numbers from the high school at 806 to our out-of-district number at 40. So you can see the variations at the schools. I'll give you a second to look at that. All right, so this is the number of students by grade. As you can see, and I mentioned last time, that we have another large group coming in and kindergarten at 250 students. You can see that as every now and then, we do have a large group. So again, at grade four right now, that's been a group that's been large. It's moving through as well as seven at grade seven and at grade 11 as well. So this is our enrollment per grade. Our school choice this year has held steady. This is the last five years. It, we had some jumps, but last year and this year, there's only a difference of actually one student. And only two students from the year before. So the last three years, we've been held pretty steady with our school choice. And that's, this year is at 168 students. Our five-year comparison, as we've talked about before, in Falmouth as well as across the Cape, there has been a steady and slow decline of our enrollment. So the past five years, we are just a little bit below last year's. Last year was 3,095. This year, again, is the 3,090. So holding steady with last year. Our class sizes, as you can see, to the very right is the recommended class sizes per our educator's contract. So we are falling right in the middle with our kindergarten at 17 per class. The rest of the grades are all under the recommended number. So grade one and two and three, we have average class size at 16. And grade four at 17, grade five at 19, and grade six at 20. So the 19 and 20 is quite a bit lower than what we've actually had in the last few years. And this is broken down by race and ethnicity. And you see the percentages. Just a little bit of information here. The African-American category has been holding steady. The Asian population has declined somewhat. Two years ago, it was a 2.2. Had dropped to 1.9 and now we're at a 1.6. The Hispanic population has grown from a 6.2 two years ago to 8.6 this year. The Native American group has held steady. And jumping to the multi-race, non-Hispanic has been holding steady around 6 to 6.6 this year. Sorry, I have one more slide. I'll get back. And under student identification, I wanted to share a little information about our English language learners. Three, two years ago, it was at 3.4%. It grew to 4% last year and we're at 4.3%. I think that we've mentioned in several presentations that it is a growing population for Falmouth. Students with disabilities has risen as well. Two years ago, it was 17.3. Last year at 19 and this year at the 20.2. And the economically disadvantaged group, as we have mentioned several times, are, is also growing. Two years ago, it was 28.4. Last year, 31, and this year, we're at 36.6. So all three populations are growing in Falmouth.
Great. Any questions? Thank you, Lori. Any questions from Andrea?
I just thought I'd look to see if there's somebody else. I was wondering with these numbers, especially when we're looking at the enrollment five-year comparison, what, if any, impact do you think that COVID has had on that? Because I know that we've had a lot of people, at least last year, who had made the decision to homeschool and/or look for other learning opportunities because of remote learning. This is about, so I'm just wondering if those come back? Are we still seeing those have left the school and are no longer here? Et cetera. So I don't know if you thought, should there was any sort of lasting impact?
So the homeschool, I think, is where we're seeing the most. We had a large number of families last year because of COVID that has, that chose homeschool. And we have about 50 students that returned from the homeschool this year right now. And these are preliminary numbers because we actually don't have this information. A lot of the information are reported to us over time. But that's, I think, our biggest shift. And so even though we've had that number come back, our population was holding steady from last, last year.
Yeah, so with that being said, right, we would expect that from the FY '21 to '22, that it would be up a little bit because those 50 would have come back. But so even with those 50 coming back, the enrollment has still dropped significantly. So you're seeing both of those things happening at the same time. I think that's pretty. And then just one more question on the school choice number. She said there were 168. Do we have all, were all seats filled?
No, no, we didn't.
So we still have.
I don't think at any grade, we actually filled all the seats. So there are still rooms for students to join us. And we welcome them. We welcome all students.
So I'm wondering about the class size page. And so since we're falling so far below what we target, I'm wondering if some of those low sizes are because we've held on to positions this year because we had to answer dollars and we were trying to keep the transition a little bit easier for teachers and kids coming back into this year. So is that?
Absolutely.
Is that why we say that?
Okay, absolutely.
Okay. Yes, so we should expect that these will eventually go back.
Yes.
To being within our target range. It's not like a permanent trend.
Thank you for saying that.
Good question.
Yeah, let's go. Thank you.
Um, any other questions for Dr. Dor? Okay, thank you very much for sharing that. Appreciate it. Next is to act on the superintendent's scores.
Okay. So just a couple of things have changed since the last time that I did a quick review. And you have this in your packet. I just put in there where all the standards are that each goal actually represents. But goal one is a student learning goal. Implement district and school plans for re-engaging all students in full-time, in-person learning in safe and healthy school environments. And my thing has been very sensitive now, so. But anyway, so here are the standards. But the key actions, ensure implementation of district school strategy for reconnecting with students in a full-time, in-person learning environment for increasing student engagement, for increasing student growth and achievement. For ongoing planning, monitoring, and review meetings with central office administrators and principals focused on district school actions. Presentation updates at school committee meetings and school and district communications. And medium postings are the measures. And back to key actions, it's like skipping every other slide. I do apologize. I don't know why it's on there. And ensuring the health and safety. And as Kelly had mentioned last time, making sure that we're aligning the budget with strategies as needed and collaborating with the school committee leads that were shared last time. Because this is an action that we actually share on our goal. So I mentioned the, the measures. And sorry about that. Why it's been sensitive. Goal two is the district improvement goal. Outreach and communication after limited interactions during the COVID-19 during last school year to re-establish in-person opportunities for engagement with staff, students, and families and continue the community engagement. Again, the standards that's related to this goal. You know, holding in-person staff listening sessions, re-establishing the conversations with the superintendent, holding coffee hours with families, holding in-person family sessions at schools and community centers, and re-establishing the superintendent's student advisory. And you met Teagan earlier. She's one of my students. And we've already had our first meeting this year, which was exciting. And then additional key actions is to continue to connect with community partners. And I hope I did not leave anyone out, but there are many partnerships we have, as you can see. And everyone on my value highly. And just, just improves the school district by association with these partners. And then collaborate with the school committee leads on the shared goals and actions. I can't skip. There it is. Okay, so the measures. Just the information from staff, student families, and the community sessions, discussions with school council meetings, staff and family letters, and presentation updates at the school committee meetings. Okay, all right, goal three. We're there. Professional practice goal. Focus on diversity, equity, inclusion. Work with principals and other district leaders to carry out the established vision and common language and delve deeper into professional learning for all staff that challenges our beliefs, understandings, and practices in the pursuit of equitable academic and social-emotional outcomes for all students. If you remember, this was a goal that I had last year. And so this is the second, and this aligns with the district-wide strategic goal. And so we're moving into year two. And so I aligned, you know, what I'll be addressing with that as well as aligning with the school committee goal here. Again, the standards that are related to this goal. Just looking at the continued cultural proficiency. Professional learning with the admin team and then with the staff. Having Dr. Kleswornum back this year and Dr. Adolf Brown, which I'm going to talk a little bit about later. Begin restorative practices, professional learning, which we just began last Friday. And continue to review curriculum and inclusion opportunities. Continue to review program data and increase diverse, diverse student inclusion. Make systemic changes to inform our hiring practices and mentoring strategies. Support the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Officer. Continue to connect with community partners. And again, thank you, Kelly, align budget with strategies and collaborate with the school committee leads on the shared goals. Because it really is a school committee lead with all three of these, so.
I love that.
Some measures, meetings and trainings, increase diverse curriculum opportunities, increase diverse student participation in all programs, increase opportunities for staff and student engagement and restorative practices, continued review and improvement of the discipline section of our student handbook. Plan for increased diversity in the workforce. The DEI off successfully onboarded with established goals and benchmarks. Continued opportunities to engage with community partners. I need some help apparently because it's not, it's moving.
I think that was a.
No, that's very. Okay, so now questions? Page, but I'm ready for questions.
Okay, so are there any? Thank you for that, Lori. Are there any questions related to Lori's goals for this year? So.
So I think having done this, I'm surprised now. I'm starting to learn about what I need to know so I don't get tripped up at the end when we're actually. So for goal number one, under key actions, it refers to the district slash school strategy. Is that something that we will guess or will be more articulated so that we will be able to kind of look back to that?
Yes, absolutely. So those are the key actions. And so when I'm reporting now, I'll report out on what they are.
On the what the.
Yes, what the strategies are and how well we're doing around strategies.
Great, thank you. And I have a comment, comment question regarding goal three, where you speak of working down a common language. And one of our goals is school committee members, school committee is one of our action steps is about defining key terms. So could we share that? I think that'd be a really important resource to make sure we're all speaking the same language.
Yes, so we actually established the vision and the common language last year. And so this is really about sharing that out.
Yeah.
So taking the next level, so.
Yeah, as you delve into that. Something just I like the where we can, I like tying it to the school committee goal. Lead people, because I like when they're when all of when we're all doing the same work in our own life. Exactly. I appreciate that you added that. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much. So tying in with the goals, next is a review of the observation and mid-cycle evaluation. So earlier this afternoon. I emailed documents to all of you. Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped right over it. I was so excited. Stepping back, thank you, Lisa. Right to the next. Good point. Is there a motion? We need to act on her goals. Is there a motion to approve? Okay.
I like a motion to approve the superintendent goals for twenty one, twenty two.
Thank you. Excellent. Good catch. Thank you, Lisa. And it needs to be a roll call vote again, starting with Leah. We'll circle back to Leah. Bill Ryder.
Ryder, yes. Dorfner, yes.
Lisa.
Lisa Hart, yes.
Melissa. Well, Jess. From Madera's, yes. And Leah, hello there.
Hi, sorry about that. Leah Palmer, yes.
Okay, and I'm also a yes, so unanimous. Thank you very much. And thank you again for reminding me. So now circling back to the observation process. So an email went out to all of us earlier today with the blank evaluation form, observation form, and some reference materials from DSC and also the Massachusetts School Committee in terms of, you know, what an evaluation and observation should look like. So just to recap, as school committee members, one of our major tasks is to evaluate superintendent. And it's split into two significant chunks of the school year. So we are approaching the mid-cycle. And so an observation between the start of the school year and December is due. We need at least three, but in a perfect scenario, we would all take a moment and do an observation for the superintendent. And the deadline for receiving the observations is January seventh, which I know right now feels very far away, but it will not. It will be here in a moment. And so the superintendent and also Sharon will share opportunities for observation with all of us so that we can be there. Most things are in person at this point. So we can actually, it's novel. Last year we had to circle with the YouTube videos and this year we can actually meet in person. So if you have any questions about the email or the process, please feel free to reach out.
Can you just tell me the date again?
January seventh.
Thank you. I just got to put it in the calendar right now.
Yeah, exactly, because it's like right after the holidays and. Good point. Yeah, so I will remind you periodically, but I want it as on your radar now so you can start thinking about opportunities for observation.
And you said that Sharon will be sending out suggestions or opportunities as well.
And where we're heading into the budget season, there'll be lots of open forums, open community events, we're sure that we can attend. Yes, Andrew.
In the past, I don't need it to be as detailed as you've done before, but where we would know certain things that were tied to the goals. And maybe that could just be highlighted sometimes so that we remember to take good detailed notes when those things happen throughout the year so that we have them ready to go.
Was it the one page summary that was in our?
Yeah. I don't want you to do extra work like that, but maybe even just bringing it up.
Yes. Yeah, highlighted. Thank you for that. Absolutely. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much. And thank you again, Dr. Dor, for your presentation, your goals. Update for the superintendent.
I do have an announcement to make first. I have several several updates, but the first I'd like to say that since I came to Falmouth in twenty eighteen, Mary Gans has been the proud principal at the Falmouth High School. She rose through the ranks first as the adjustment counselor, then assistant principal, followed by an interim principal, and then finally the principal of Falmouth High School. Her knowledge of Falmouth community and the schools has been a great asset to me during my superintendency. I've been able to rely on Mary through thick and thin. Her incredible work ethic and leadership qualities has led Falmouth High School to gain the NEAS accreditation. She has inspired both students and staff during her tenure. Mary, then the reason I am actually stating this tonight, which is true every day. But Mary has submitted her resignation as the principal of Falmouth High School. It's been great working with her. I sleep at nights knowing that she is at the home at Falmouth High School. And we will miss her greatly as the principal, but I also wish her all the best in this new phase of her career.
Thank you for that. That is a very significant loss to our district, but we wish Mary the best.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for asking that, Andrea. So as of January third, it is effective. I'm sorry. Yes, and so, you know, the dedicated person that Mary is definitely wanted to be around to see us through the NEAS accreditation process. And certainly appreciate her leadership in that and for her thinking once again about the staff and students at Falmouth High School. So January third, it'll be effective. Yes. I will be naming the interim principal, which no reason I can't name it tonight. Because he has accepted. So the assistant principal, Tom McManaman, will step in as the interim principal. I will be posting for the principal position mid-year and will go through a interview and selection process. But we'll be in good hands with Tom at the lead. Okay.
Any additional support for Tom?
Yes, we're going to have some traditional or additional plans. We'll have another assistant principal, which I will I will announce it at some other time.
Okay.
I wanted to just make this, yes, there'll be a few transitions that we'll be making. But thank you for asking that, and I will update you as we make those additional plans.
Thank you very much.
So now I'd like to introduce, not introduce, but I want to say Dr. Brown. Dr. Adolf Brown was our keynote speaker at this past Friday's professional development for our staff. It was extremely inspiring, relevant, and he's quite entertaining. We received lots of feedback from our staff. Some of the comments were the most profound and effective speaker. Deeply moved, truly inspirational, and the best PD ever, or some of the comments. He is known for his simple and direct real talk. He talks about balcony leadership and all in the encompassed in the equity, diversity, and inclusion realm. So I think one of the pieces for me that's that really touches me and probably I relate to the most is that we can be human and we can be kind. And so I want to wrap up that, but he was just a very inspiring speaker. Okay, so I mentioned last time that also last week we started the Womp and Knog performances, the dance and drum performances. And we almost fell through. We had several performances. We had a slow start in the beginning of the week because of the rain on Monday and Tuesday that we had to reschedule. But the end of the week, the students absolutely enjoyed the program. We got great feedback from both staff and students. This was Cameron Green Deer coordinated the program. And what I'm hearing back from the principals that it was incredible to see the students connecting with our guests in a fun, interactive, and instructional way. The schools, it was fun to have an in-person performance was one, but the the students were able to get up and dance as well. And so it was that interactive piece, as well as they did history. And they really enjoyed it, and I get to join them tomorrow morning. So I'm looking forward because I'm getting all this great feedback from everyone.
And that runs through the rest of this week.
Just tomorrow. I think tomorrow's the last one. Yes. All right, also in your packet, I just want to point out the Career Fair because it's very exciting that we get to have the in-person Career Fair again this year for juniors and seniors. And it's will be next Wednesday. There's about a hundred or more colleges that will be involved in the Career Fair. So we're very excited about that. And the entire newsletter that Alan Konzerian puts together for us. There's lots of exciting news, so I encourage you to read through that. Thank you, Alan.
Any questions or comments about Lori's update?
I heard that Dr. Adolf Brown was amazing, and I wish that we could have gone. I I really, it sounded like he really kind of spoke to the soul to a lot of people. And I know that the school committee really probably wouldn't have had a place at a PD per se. But I really, I hear, heard nothing but good things about it. And I'm sorry that I was not able to, that we were not able to participate. Or I mean, not that, you know what I'm trying to say. I just, I hear it was great.
Now, is that the first time that he worked with us?
Yes, it's the first time. I first saw him. He presented at the superintendent's conference in July, a few years ago. And and he was just, he was amazing. And he was just as amazing the second time round on Friday. So many area superintendents actually, after that day, had booked him. And we actually had him booked for last year and then COVID hit. And so, you know, we had to wait and put it off. So it was it was amazing. It was well worth the wait.
I heard similar feedback. Floating.
I'm sure it's not the same talk, but just putting his name in. Yeah, a couple of talks popped up. You can watch online, so. Check him out. I'm sure it won't be the same.
I did.
You already did? I'm going to do it now.
And I guess it was really interactive and sort of tailored-ish, if you will.
Any other questions or comments? We're just chugging through this. Next is we're seeing this as to approve the minutes from September twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Is there a second? And any edits or comments on the minutes? I'm seeing not as a roll.
Natalie, I have an edit. Just I I was there at the beginning of the meeting, but I did step out to use the bathroom. So just. Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, so we will strike arrived at six forty PM next to Leah's name. So again, the motion to approve the minutes with that one edit. A roll call vote. Leah, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Okay, Bill Ryder.
Ryder, yes. Dorfner, yes.
Lisa. Lisa Hart, yes.
Melissa Keith, yes.
Well, yes. Terry. During Madera's, yes. And Andrea, and I'm also a yes. So that is unanimous with the one edit to remove the time next to Leah's name. Member reports.
Ellie. So negotiations have still been meeting in addition to our regular weekly meetings. Today we did a marathon. We met from ten to three today. And we'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Terry.
This isn't really a committee, but it was a meeting with the NEAC. So the other, last week, Lisa and I met with the one, the interview committee for the school committee. And we answered questions. I would say probably the highlight of the questions he asked was community arc, communicating with the community at large, which we we do. And Lisa and I had two different ways of explaining how we do. She was with more with social media, which I for years have been against, but I went over to it. But I thought it was good that they heard two different voices, opinions about stuff. And you learn a lot when you go through these processes of NEAC. And one thing they ask about was, did we walk through and sit in on the classrooms? And were we aware of the curriculum? And there are some districts where school committee members do that. And I told her that was just definitely not the way we did things in Falmouth. And and then I'm glad that I could answer a curriculum question that we never get complaints about our curriculum. So, I mean, our school committee is not versed that well in the curriculums. It's not in our things. Although when I first ran for school committee, I was curriculum. And that's why I ran, because I thought I knew about curriculum, having been a teacher. But anyway, but I did say, you know, we are lucky that we're working on our partnership with the Woods Hole Scientific community. And later on, I thought about the Womp and Knog work with the UN and with the Portuguese background of people in Falmouth. So anyway. And one common thread we had about school committee was that we are both the, I believe she was the superintendent of Sandwich Public Schools, was the head of that meeting, I believe. There were a lot of names there. You don't have a lot of time to just take it all in. But she said getting kids in meetings is one of their sadnesses too, that they don't get enough there. So on, there's two things I wanted to took away from the NEAC, which were more about Falmouth, not the school committee, but other things. And one of them was when they were talking about the walkthroughs, which we don't do. I thought I would like to have a meeting of our communications group because I think we need to start putting through, you know, some talking with people or some surveys and stuff. Two things that came to my mind were the restorative justice piece. How is that starting to play out? And the outside classrooms, which people are loving. And I guess, I guess, we don't know for sure, but you can imagine they love them. But it just would be good to get it from the horse's mouth, so. but you can imagine they love them, but it just would be good to get it from the horses, not so. I propose we have a meeting.
Yeah.
The members will have to brainstorm offline when that would be. The other thing I took away from having gone through this interview process with the group was, I've done, I was a teacher when those things happened. I don't know how many of them, because they happen every 10 years, but they are a monumental amount of work. I don't think people, unless you've gone through and realized, I mean, you have to count library books. You have to revamp your, not revamp, but view your course descriptions, count students. The, the information that you have to gather in that time is a lot of work. And so I think we should take a minute and thank the high school teachers. We have done it last week. They did so much extra work because not only were they involved with the NEASC meetings, but they also had open house. And they had to get midterm reports due and they had to write their SMART goals. So I'm just saying, I think those teachers had a lot on their plates last week, a real, real lot on their plates. And I just would like to say, thank you to them.
Yeah, I agree. Thanks. That was great. And just jumping ahead briefly, Terry, thank you for that segue because one of the things on my list is that in December, I'd like us to have a sort of an update on our goals. And so I was going to suggest that each of the goal leads have meetings offline so that we're prepared for that December meeting. So thank you for that. Any other committee member reports?
So I'll be attending the next VIPS board meeting on Thursday morning. And I did just hope that everybody had a chance to see what Tracy Crago sent around as sort of this monthly update. And I know she was looking for feedback. So if anybody had any thoughts, I could certainly, that you haven't already given to her, I'd be happy to take that to the meeting on Thursday.
And also VIPS, I just want to do a quick shout out. I know that they're looking for mentors. So a quick plug that if you have time to give to a student in the district, I know that the VIPS program, they're definitely looking for mentors to add to their roster. So something worthwhile to think about. Any other committee member reports? And requests for information?
Okay, it's not a request. And I know it's so completely off topic and I apologize.
That's quite a lead in.
Okay, so I am not one that always reads the Once Upon a Time Things and the Enterprise. And so I figure other people are probably not as well, but I have to read this.
I read everything.
Okay, so 75 years ago, 1946, the mice and rats of Lawrence High School, who devoured about three-fourths of the school's college bulletins and ruined many other books during the summer vacation, no longer have the run of the place. When the last light had been turned off and the last door locked, William Smith, the janitor, turns the school over to Lawrence High's newly acquired cats, who are excellent mousers.
I nearly fell off my chair and I just had, I just, I just had to. I'm sorry.
No, I love it. That was.
But can you imagine?
I cannot, actually.
That's how they dealt with it?
I think that's fine. Listen, this is one through the kid's circle of life.
Thank you for indulging me.
Absolutely. Any other, well, that was quite, but I loved it. A request for information.
Yeah. You know, first of all, it was wonderful to have the opportunity to meet our new diversity and inclusion officer. An opportunity to do that this past week. One of the things that brought back to my memory, back in our June 22nd meeting, I had requested some information in reference to policies and procedures as far as how students are placed with teachers from year to year. I believe that was the last day of school and we were, I was already talking about the, the upcoming school year. And I was just wondering if I could go ahead and resubmit that request to, to see where we're going. And you know, I know everybody's busy, but maybe if we could even just look at more spot. If you could just narrow it down to that, let me know how, what policies and procedures in place to make sure that there's equity placement in classrooms. Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Dorf. Any other requests for information, Bill?
Yes, it was brought up a while ago when we were talking about S or dollars in reference to technology, where we had a lot of extra SMARTboards. And if we could just get an overview of what happened to those SMARTboards? Did they go to other schools, other programs? Just, just kind of update, because I know it's kind of significant, the number of SMARTboards because of the new technology we were able to acquire and we could obviously use those to help other people out.
You mean the ones we declared the surplus, those?
Yeah, the surplus ones.
I, yes, Dr. Dorf will address that now.
Yeah, so, you know, it's a good question. It is outdated technology. I think it was, my understanding was around 2008 to 2010 where the, the last ones installed. So it's, we have new technology. So we were facing just about what every other district is facing with the S or dollars. They were updating their technology as well. We actually put out a, you know, all call to every district in Massachusetts. And in the summertime, when our first delivery date was in the middle of summer, we had a couple of districts that said that they would take a couple of them to hold them over till they got their new technology. But then ours didn't arrive until mid, mid-August. When we started installing, they no longer wanted them because their technology was arriving soon. So it would have been a lot of work to put up and take down, and so they decided not to. So there, there was no other district in the state that was in need of SMARTboards because everyone's looking for the updated technology. I look at this the same as a flip phone versus a smartphone. And there's not many people out there that's going to accept a, you know, flip phone right now when the technology is really around a smartphone. And so I will say, you know, we tried, we even tried organizations for shipping overseas. The issue with that is that it costs too much money. And so organizations are no longer actually accepting technology or textbooks or anything to, to ship because of the cost involved. So unfortunately, it's what happens when our, you know, laptops are kind of ran their course and no longer accepts updates and there's no longer a need for them that we, you know, that they have to, you know, surplus, we can't get rid of them. Then yes, they are considered, I mean, they go out with the, you know, in the dumpster of the trap, you know, everyone. So yes, that is the case. I will say that we've made phone calls to all the daycares around. And there was one daycare that, that asked for one. And so, and we're certainly, we'll get that to them. But that's where we are. It's, you know, it's kind of sad, but it's a part of reality and a part of the evolution of technology and, you know, keeping current.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate the update.
Any other requests for information? Nope. So I will just recap, get together as you can with your groups related to the goals so that, again, we can have a hearty conversation in December related to some work toward our goals. So is there a motion to adjourn? I know this isn't record. Second, Lisa, second. Roll call vote, Leah.
Yes, thank you.
Bill Ryder.
Yes.
We have time, if you wish.
Lisa Hart, yes.
Melissa.
Melissa Keith, yes.
Well, Jess. Jerry Madures, yes. And I am also a yes. Thank you very much. Have a great night.